Well, I call this meeting to order and let's get started. Ms. Tanner, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Basine?
Here.
Camson?
Here.
Clanton?
Present.
Gabriel?
Present.
Jordan?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
And Martin?
Here. Okay, welcome back, everyone. First, on our business meeting, or next on it, is our pledge allegiance, Ms. Simpson.
Good evening, Madam Chair Dr. Martin, Vice Chair Jordan, Superintendent Dr. Sharon Birdsong, Board members, and our viewers. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Simpson. Okay, next, we have a musical performance. Ms. Roby?
Hi, good evening.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Dr. Martin, Vice Chair Jordan, members of the board, Dr. Birdsong in our cabinet. I'm delighted this evening to present a cello performance from Ms. Emily Christian, and she's a student at Booker T. Washington.
Hello, my name is Emily Christian, and I'm a freshman at Booker T. Washington High School. I'm currently in the fine arts program there, and today I'm going to be playing for you "The Swan" by Saint Zong's.
Okay, sorry, I lost myself there. Excellent job, so brava, brava, right? So Emily? So you're a ninth grader. I mean, you're absolutely, absolutely beautiful playing. How long have you been playing the cello?
I've been playing since fifth grade.
Okay.
But I've really started getting involved with it for about two years.
And what made you choose the cello?
I just wanted to be different, because a lot of people like to choose the violin, and I wanted to be a little different than everybody else.
Yeah, I have to say, from, I don't know if I've said this story before, but when I moved from the alto saxophone to the tenor saxophone, everyone had to prove that I would carry that bigger instrument home to practice with. So I'm sure that's a concern, but I think that you were smart in following what your passion is, and I really appreciate you sharing that with us this evening.
Thank you.
I look forward to a time when I can come and watch you perform in person. So please, thank you so much. Okay, so next, I'd like to have Dr. Birdsong offer her superintendent's report.
Good evening, Madam Chair Martin, Vice Chairman Jordan, members of the school board and members of our community. I'm pleased to share some items of interest with you this evening. First of all, before we roll our monthly video report, I'd like to share that Governor Ralph Northam, Superintendent of Public Instruction Dr. James Lane, and the Virginia Board of Education recognized November 2020 as Family Engagement in Education Month in the Commonwealth of Virginia. The Virginia Board of Education and members of our school board believe that families and schools working together can create meaningful relationships that lead to significant gains in student achievement and success. Over 30 years of research clearly indicates that students achieve at higher levels when schools and families support each other. Moreover, research has shown that when schools and families are engaged in meaningful two-way communication and collaboration, students demonstrate more positive attitudes towards school, have greater grades or higher grades in test scores, which equates to higher levels of achievement, they have better attendance, they complete more homework, they have higher graduation rates, and greater enrollment in post-secondary education. Family Engagement in Education Month is an opportunity to recognize the importance of families and schools and the work being done throughout the Commonwealth, and specifically for us, the city of Norfolk, to ensure that we work together to build better futures for all children. Additionally, it's an opportunity to recognize that due to the COVID-19 pandemic and its impact on the operation of our schools, parents have had to take on a more proactive, active, and direct role in the education of their children. As such, on behalf of the administration, I would like to once again recognize and thank our wonderful parents and guardians for all that they do to support the education of their children. Next, within this evening's video, you'll see examples of the work of our illustrious building principals and hardworking staff to prepare our school buildings to receive students for in-person instruction. Clearly, our principals and staff have engaged in proactive planning efforts to ensure that our students have the safest and most engaging instructional experiences upon their return to our buildings. Principals who are highlighted within the video are Dr. James Peterson of Larchmont Elementary, Dr. Danielle Belton of the Gint School, and Mrs. Letitia Wade Jenkins of Lake Taylor High School. I also want to congratulate Mrs. Kaneldra Harrison, the Office Manager of Grandy High School, who was recently installed as the President of the Virginia Association of Educational Office Professionals at their Fall Conference, which was hosted by the Norfolk Chapter, the AEOPian. I was appreciative of having the awesome opportunity to provide greetings during their conference on behalf of Norfolk Public Schools and the City of Norfolk. Again, congratulations to Mrs. Harrison. The school community of Blair Middle safely enjoyed engaging in the festivities of the fall season during their Fall Frenzy Parade, which was well-attended and received by community members. Principal Patrick Doyle and his staff and students did an absolutely amazing job of hosting this event, which afforded students an opportunity to restock their school supplies and to receive other goodies as well. Finally, our video this evening features some of the many wonderful specialty programs that Norfolk Public Schools offers to our secondary students. Our annual showcase of specialty programs was held virtually this year, and our families had an opportunity to get to know some of the outstanding staff who made these programs so successful. So without further ado, we're going to roll the video.
As the possibility of students returning to classrooms grows closer, elementary and secondary executive directors have been visiting their schools to ensure that they're fully prepared to receive students. These guided walkthroughs are designed to confirm that CDC guidelines and district-developed checklists are being implemented at every school in the district.
I'm at Larchmont today because of the reopening of schools eventually, and Dr. Peterson has been so kind to take me around to each of the classrooms, and I've been to the little clinic that he has prepared and the office, and how kids will be received, and how kids will be dismissed in the afternoons.
One of the biggest things is the social distancing that we want to ensure that our youngest children follow, because when you have five and six-year-old students, it's very hard to keep them apart. So we put down over 400 paw prints throughout the building on every hallway and stairwell to give the children a visual reminder of what six feet looks like, especially for our youngest students.
I mean, it's a wonderful opportunity to see what our staff, the amount of work they have put into this virtual learning environment. You can tell the compassion from every school is very consistent, because we want to send a consistent message throughout our district that we are truly prepared to receive our students once we return face-to-face district-wide.
Well, I showed her basically the directionality of the school, when parents enter the school to the main office, and as well as the students, when they come in from the bus ramp, how they enter the communities. So basically, our school is a directional, one-way around, because we're basically a U shape. So everything is clearly marked, at least a minimum of six feet apart.
In our secondary schools, which are larger buildings, there was clearly an emphasis on how greater numbers of students would safely travel through the buildings from the moment they arrive.
We wanted to make sure that we highlighted the direction, the movement in the building, how students would transition from one location to the other. We also went through the process of receiving students in the morning, as well as dismissal. We also shared with my executive director how students will eat lunch, and how we've socially distanced them during that lunchroom time.
I was so very impressed with the detail of the planning. Ms. Wade Jenkins and her team has been meticulous in ensuring that they have looked at every angle, every possibility, knowing how their kids will move through the building, knowing where the hotspots may be, and planning proactively for that to ensure their safety.
Superintendent of Schools Dr. Sharon Birdsong sent special messages to two important groups in early November. She recorded a welcome greeting for the Virginia Association of Educational Office Professionals Fall Conference, and she also gave an important message to all NPS staff members to encourage and thank them for everything that they do for our students and families.
I stand in awe of all of our highly dedicated teachers, administrators, and staff who have truly embraced and conquered the many new challenges associated with fulfilling the responsibilities of their positions. Whether it's learning to work with a mask on, or being socially distant from colleagues, or learning new protocols for cleaning and disinfecting workspaces, I commend you for keeping focused and moving forward for the sake of our children and the high-quality education that each and every one of them deserves.
Just in time for Halloween, Blair Middle School promoted literacy and fun during their Fall Frenzy Drive-Thru Parade. Students and parents were greeted by teachers and Superintendent Dr. Sharon Birdsong, who gave out books, school supplies, and even a few Halloween treats. On November 5th, Norfolk Public Schools held its first-ever virtual specialty program showcase on Channel 47 and YouTube. Every specialty program in middle and high school was prominently featured during this informative event. In case you missed it, each program's presentation is currently located on the NPS YouTube channel and our website.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes my superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Birdsong. That's real, I really enjoyed seeing all of the preparation work that's being done in our schools and all of the professional training, you know, to keep them clean and keep everything so orderly. That's wonderful, thank you. I'd like to go on to our next item. Ms. Tanner? Do you have a clerk's report at all to? Ms. Tanner, for item four point zero?
We do not have a clerk's report, but we do have our resolution tonight for Dr. Anna G. Dodson, and her family members are here, Yvonne, Catherine, and Leanna Dodson.
Welcome. Ms. Tanner, would you like to?
Good afternoon, good evening. Well, hello, how you doing?
Great, how are you?
Doing good, thank you.
Ms. Tanner?
Yes. Leanna, if each of you could just introduce yourselves so they'll know who is who on the call tonight.
Okay. Hello, my name is Leanna. I'm the eldest granddaughter of Dr. Dodson, and I have my sisters Yvonne and Catherine.
Hello, I'm Catherine. I'm the middle granddaughter of Dr. Dodson.
Well, welcome.
And good evening, my name's Yvonne Goodwin, and I'm the youngest granddaughter of Dr. Anna Dodson.
Welcome. So how many grandchildren does Ms. Dodson have?
She has three in total.
Okay, okay, so we're all three here, this is wonderful, I think that's.
Thank you for having us.
Ms. Tanner, would you like to go ahead and read the resolution?
Yes, I would like to do that. Resolution by the School Board of the City of Norfolk in honor of Dr. Anna G. Dodson. Whereas the Norfolk City School Board and the broader Norfolk Public Schools community lost a valued community member and leader on Tuesday, August 4th, 2020, with the passing of Dr. Anna G. Dodson. Whereas Dr. Anna Dodson was a tireless and outspoken advocate for strong public education and spent her entire career empowering young people. Whereas Dr. Dodson retired from Norfolk Public Schools after serving over 40 years as a teacher, counselor, supervisor of elementary school guidance counselors, and the Director of Research, Testing, and Statistics. Whereas, working with the students brought her immense pleasure and satisfaction. She encouraged her students to dream big and to work hard to obtain their dreams, and she inspired her staff and colleagues to strive to reach higher goals. Whereas during her tenure, which Norfolk City Schools, Dr. Anna Dodson developed and implemented several award-winning programs, projects, research instruments, and documents, notably her career poetry and poster contest project, was adopted by the National Vocational Guidance Association and became an annual national nationwide public school event. Whereas, while serving as the supervisor of elementary school guidance, Dr. Dodson was elected president of two state guidance associations and authored numerous professional articles that were published in professional peer-reviewed journals. Whereas Dr. Dodson served as a member and vice chair of the Norfolk City School Board from 1998 to 2006, served as Chair of the Council of the Great City Schools, and served as the Secretary of the Norfolk Public Schools Education Foundation. Whereas Dr. Dodson in 2005 received the Green Garner Award, the nation's highest urban education honor, recognizing outstanding contributions in urban education from the Council of Great City Schools, and received the Hampton Roads YWCA's 2005 Women of Distinction in Education Award. Whereas in 2006, Dr. Dodson received a Cube Award for Excellence from the National School Boards Association, recognizing her collective efforts to bring forth excellence in the school board governance, building civic capacity, closing the achievement gap, equity in education, and demonstrated success of academic excellence. Whereas Dr. Dodson's most cherished recognition was the naming in her honor of the Dodson Scholars Program, a program designed and established at Norview High School in 2000 for young African-American men to enhance their ability to continue their studies in higher education. Whereas Dr. Dodson was instrumental in the publication of the book entitled "The History of Norfolk Public Schools, 1681 to 2000." Whereas Dr. Dodson was what's much loved and respected by her family, friends, coworkers, and many students, both in Norfolk, the Commonwealth of Virginia, and around the United States. And whereas Dr. Dodson's true legacy lies in the profound effect she has had on the countless men and women she taught, counseled, and mentored throughout her career. Therefore, it be resolved that we first honor the memory of Dr. Anna G. Dodson, recognizing her remarkable achievements, and gratefully acknowledges her and many contributions to the profession of public education, and two, extends our sincerest condolences to her family and broader family at Norfolk Public Schools. Now therefore, it be resolved on November 18th, 2020, that the School Board of the City of Norfolk hereby honors the life, legacy, and contributions of Dr. Anna G. Dodson to the City of Norfolk, Norfolk Public Schools, and society as a whole.
That was absolutely beautiful. Beautiful, thank you. We would like to say a few regards, if we may.
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, on behalf of our mother and family, we would like to thank Norfolk Public Schools for that fine resolution. Our grandmother, like you said, spent over 40 years with Norfolk Public Schools. She began as a PE teacher, a guidance counselor, a principal, a director, and a school board member. In her own words, she had a long love affair with Norfolk Public Schools. She inspired many students, colleagues, and family to achieve higher standards to pursue their goals. She challenged us to be above average and to be outstanding while standing out. She truly was an inspiration to us all. She accomplished what many of us would dream of. Again, we would like to thank you for honoring our grandmother, Dr. Anna G. Dodson. Thank you all for that fine resolution.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having us.
I do want to offer my condolences. I'm so sorry I didn't know your grandmother, but I really wish I would have. She seems like such an amazing woman, and to have accomplished all that in forty short years.
Appreciate it.
Amazing. But I do know that many of my colleagues here do have, had had personal, professional relationships with her and think very highly of her, so I'd like to go ahead and open the floor and allow anyone who has a few words for the family to go ahead. Mr. Clanton?
All right, thank you, Dr. Martin. Again, thank you all for being here. Dr. Dodson was an inspiration to so many, including myself, having the opportunity to work with her with Norfolk Public Schools, working with her with the Education Foundation, and even when I made this decision to think about running for school board, Dr. Dodson was one of the very few people that I sat down and had a conversation with, and she championed me on. She truly was an individual who, that bear her name as a Dodson Scholar. Some of my fraternity brothers are individuals who graduated from Norview High School and who thank her for her investment and support of them. Many people don't know that, you know, as school board members, we receive a very small stipend, but Dr. Dodson took that stipend every year, and she put it into the scholarship to give back to students. And so we really appreciate her, we thank you for that, and this is just a small gesture that we could do to really show our appreciation and love for Dr. Dodson. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to say a few words? Mr. Jordan?
Yeah, I'd just like to echo all that Mr. Clanton said. I also want to thank Mr. Clanton for coming up with the initial proposal and draft of the resolution that we've had, and also being able to work with the family to make sure it also had these other nuggets in there. Like Mr. Clanton had the opportunity to work with Dr. Dodson in a lot of capacities long before coming on the school board. Our families go back together a long ways, and when she was on the school board, I used to pester her, and that is, I became on the school board, she never pestered me, but she would call and offer some advice and wisdom as well. So just great, great, great lady, great family, and just appreciative for all that she's done for our city, and thanks again to the board for honoring her in this way, and I'm sure there'll be more ways that we can honor her through our work, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Anyone else? Ms. Tanner, I, well, I'd like to say. Okay, Dr. Birdsong, I didn't see you there. Go ahead.
Just a couple of words, again, my condolences, condolences to the family. Dr. Dodson was really special to me. I looked up to her, I admired her. We would often have conversations together when I was a building principal, and also when I became a brand-new central office-level administrator. I'll never forget the time, it was kind of a tumultuous time for Norfolk Public Schools, and your grandmother was serving on the board, and I can recall that I had another role, but I was also asked to serve as a building principal at one of our alternative sites. And there was a lot going on there at the time, and I can remember that she was the only board member at that time that actually came to visit me when I was asked to step in and help out and get some things done. And I'll never forget, she said to me, you know, "We might be little, but we're mighty." And so I'll never forget that, and she'll always have a special place in my heart, and I know she's going to be missed. So thank you for being here with us this evening.
Yes, Leanna, Kathy, Yvonne, I really wish we would be in person to be able to do this, you know, present all of this, these wonderful remarks about your grandmother and what a wonderful person she was, and I don't even know if our remarks can do her justice, she just sounds like an amazing woman, you know, so I wish we could do this in person, but, you know, it is the time, the circumstances of the times, and I just thank you for doing this for you and your family. Ms. Tanner, will you make sure that they get a copy of this resolution in paper?
Yes, that's what I was going to tell them. I'm going to arrange with them and do sign copies to them, but I want to let you all know too, that my son was a Dodson Scholar at Norview High School, and he appreciated the opportunity to be a part of that program, and when I told her, she was just as excited, and she actually made it a point to meet my son. So we, I just really enjoyed working with your grandmother, too. She had another program with the school board called Parent Representation Program, and I believe she won an award for that, didn't she, Mr. Jordan? With the Council of Great City Schools, so she really had a passion for our students and our young men, so I will definitely give you ladies, like I mentioned to you earlier, to make sure you have this signed copy of this resolution for your grandmother, and thank you again for allowing us to honor you tonight.
Thank you all, we appreciate it.
And Madam Chair, so that this is qualified as a part of our official record, I'd like to ask that this resolution be adopted by the board without objection.
Any objection?
Second.
Well, without objection, so.
Thank you.
Ms. Tanner, please note. Thank you. Okay, next, we have approval of the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Dr. Martin?
Yes, Dr. Gabriel?
I believe that we are approving the consent agenda with one modification.
Yes, on the personnel report, we're pulling out, we're going to vote separately on Personnel A.
So then I move that we approve the consent agenda with the modification, pulling out Personnel, what did you call, you just said?
Personnel A.
Personnel A.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Mr. Jordan?
Just on the October 21st minutes, I think there were, there's some corrections that we need to make, and just in terms of the vote counts, in turn, on some of the actions that we took there. So I don't know if it's appropriate to do that here, or if we can get those corrections and come back and do the minutes that the December meeting, but whatever is appropriate is fine with me. But I just want to make sure that there are some edits that I think we need to correct just for the record.
Okay, without objection, I'd like to postpone the vote of the October 21st minutes.
Well, Madam Chair, I do have an objection to that. If these are simple numbers that need to be corrected, can we just not point those out?
Is it simply numbers, or is it more than that?
Let me pull it back up. Uh, let me, let me pull it back up. So let's see, um.
Go into it now.
Under three point zero four, um, under motion, I guess, uh, Item A, Number Three, it shows the motion passed seven to one. I think that should be six to one, uh, if I'm correct. And um, there was another, let's see. That may have been the main one, uh, just generally, and we, we can deal with this later, but I think we also have to just try to capture some of the, oh, here's, there's another on uh, number seven, uh, three dot zero four. I think it repeats that again, uh, the, the seven one. And then uh, generally speaking, as we, you know, continue to work on this, I do think it's important that we're able to capture some of the, the board discussion. I think we do a pretty good job of capturing the administration's uh, presentation and comments to the board. But um, but anyway, that was the, the main in terms of the numbers that I thought I saw on this particular set of minutes.
Okay. Are there any other corrections to the minutes? Ms. Tanner, did you take note of those corrections? Okay. So um, we'll go ahead and uh, vote on the consent agenda. Um, pulling Personnel A from the uh, Personnel Docket and with the edits recommended by Mr. Jordan. And when you're ready, Ms. Tanner, please call the question.
Okay. Basine?
Hi.
Camson?
Hi.
Clanton?
Hi.
Gabriel?
Hi.
Jordan?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Martin?
Hi. Thank you, everyone. Um, before we move on, Ms. Tanner, um, Mr. Cloud has uh, dropped out of the meeting and he needs, he'd like to get back in. And he's been out for about five minutes now, I think. So have you gotten any messages from him?
No. And I don't see him here. I didn't see him come in.
Well, he's, he's able to communicate with me. Is there any, what would you like me to tell him to do?
Um, I will have our IT folks call him right now. To help him work through whatever his issues may be from his, his technology.
Okay. Okay, moving on to our monthly financial report. Mr. Jenkins?
Uh, yes. Good morning, uh, good evening, Chairwoman Martin, Vice Chairman Jordan, Dr. Birdsong, and members of the school board. I will review the October financial reports with you, and then I'll speak about the city's revenue sharing policy. Finally, I'll re- review the budget development debt timeline with you. Uh, first year, in the first four months of the year, the general fund revenue collections totaled seventy-eight point seven five million dollars, which was twenty-three point one percent of the three hundred and thirty-seven million dollar budget. For the same four months, we collected thirty-one point two percent of the budget in fiscal twenty and twenty-seven point nine percent in fiscal twenty nineteen. On page three, we see that the general fund spending for the four months ending in October, and I, I see Karen, uh, Ms. Tanner's trying to pull up that now. We're on page three, Ms. Tanner.
Your sound is kind of low, Mr. Jenkins. I'm sorry. I'm not sure if anyone else is experiencing that too.
Okay, thank you. So on page uh, three, we see the general fund spending for the four months ending in October was eighty-six point one percent, or twenty-five and a half percent of the budget. During the previous two years, spending for the first four months was twenty-six point nine percent of the twenty twenty budget and twenty-five and a half percent of fiscal nineteen's budget. Spending includes employee wages, vendor payments, and the value of unpaid purchase orders. There were no budget, uh, there were no budget transfers exceeding fifty thousand dollars during October. On page four of the highlights, there are two graphs uh, of monthly revenue and spending for each month of the year. The current year data is displayed only in the first four uh, months with red columns. Ms. Tanner, I think that's a couple of pages. This appears to be the bills and payroll report.
You started. Which, which reports are you referring to first? Are you under, it goes to payroll or?
No, we're under the uh, financial report, Item six point oh one, I believe.
Okay, thank you. You started and I didn't know where you were specifically.
I beg your pardon.
No, that's not a problem. I'm pulling it up for you right now.
The next graph, the next table. That's good. Okay, so this is page four of the highlights. You can see two graphs, uh, one with monthly revenue spend, uh, and also spending for each month of the year. The current year data is displayed only in the first four months with red columns. And the, the previous year's data is in uh, blue and orange. In the green background, you'll see the estimated budget for this year. There's more detailed information about the budget comparison starting on the fifth page. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer those for you now. If, if not, we can talk about the school revenue sharing policy. Yes, sir.
I have a question.
All right. Mr. Jordan has a question. Please go ahead.
And uh, Mr. Jenkins or Dr. Birdsong, you all may be able to address it together. I, I didn't go into all the details. I just want to get some clarification on something I had raised at the last meeting. In our current budget, do we have uh, funding available for the uh, stipends and resources for the hard to staff schools?
I'm assuming that we would have had to budget for that last year, which I don't believe that we did. I believe that based on all of the, the, the cuts that we ended up having to make to reduce our buddy, our budget, that um, the stipends for hard to staff were not included in the final budget for last year.
Okay. That's, that's what I was trying to get some clarity on.
Yes, yes, yes. During that process, Mr. Jordan.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay. Please proceed, Mr. Jenkins.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Martin. With respect to the school uh, revenue sharing uh, policy, uh, in two thousand and eighteen, council adopted a revenue sharing policy that defines a portion of its tax revenues that are allocated to Norfolk Public Schools. Under the policy, Norfolk Schools receives twenty-nine point five five percent of tax revenues that have not been dedicated to a specific purpose. This formula-based allocation also excludes service fees and other non-tax revenue. Earlier this week, the city shared its estimates for uh, the MPS share of the revenue for fiscals twenty twenty through twenty twenty-two. And I'll review those with you briefly now. In fiscal twenty twenty, which was last year, um, the budget, uh, the, the amount that we, we were budgeted for city revenue uh, was uh, one hundred and twenty-six million dollars. This was a pre-COVID budget. The preliminary um, allocations or actual results would indicate that we should have received a hundred and twenty-four point seven million. So that's about, that's one point three million less than the original budget. However, it is much improved over the estimates that were being made in the spring of the year. So at, at this point, the revenue sharing balance uh, from last year should be pretty solid. And I expect that the annual audit will either confirm it or there will be a very small adjustment to it. So that was last year. For fiscal twenty twenty-one, uh, and this is the May twenty twenty revenue estimate, our current, current budget is a hundred and twenty-one million dollars from the city. The revised estimate that was, that were, was provided us earlier this month was a hundred and twenty-six point three. So our, our expected share for fiscal twenty-one, that's this current year, is actually five point three million more than is in our budget. The revised estimate is about one point two eight percent more than the actual amount from last year. Uh, for this year, city staff, I also need to point out that the city staff projections, while they are improved from last spring, they are very much tied to what happens with the coronavirus and the pandemic. Uh, most, more specifically, more specifically, the estimates are based on when a COVID vaccine will be widely distributed and available and widespread inoculations actually occur. The mid-range estimate uh, for the widespread inoculation is in fall of twenty twenty-one, with a, a return to normal activity of, by the summer of twenty twenty-two. So the city's, the city's estimates would depend on um, inoculation throughout the community by about a year from now. If that occurs, if that occurs sooner, their revenue estimates look better. If it occurs later, they look worse. So this is the estimate that they're making, using that assumption. For fiscal twenty twenty-two, which is next year, their estimate is a hundred and twenty-seven point six million. This would be one percent above the fiscal twenty twenty-one revised amount. And it also has the same assumptions with, with respect to vaccination um, against the COVID virus. If there are any questions, we can certainly just, uh, we can certainly, I'll try to answer those now.
Any questions? I don't see any hands. Uh, Mr. Jordan, go ahead.
Ju- just a comment. I, I caught a portion of the uh, city council's retreat that they had on Saturday when they were having some discussions about the, the budget and the revenue projections and what was there and what wasn't there. Like I said, I didn't catch the, the full amount of it. You know, as we have our budget hearing coming up uh, soon, or at our work session in a second, maybe we can just take a, a, a deeper dive. I'm still trying to make sure I'm grasping the, the funding formula and the impact from uh, what we adopted in the budget, what we approved in the budget, and where we are now, and exactly how we are dealing with uh, how the city is dealing with their, their projections as, as you described. So just like to get a deeper understanding of it and whether that's something we can do in a two-by-two or some other manner. Uh, just wanted to get an opportunity to do that. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jordan. Anyone else? Ms. Basine, please unmute yourself and go ahead.
Um, yeah, so along those lines too, you know, and, and again, we can do this in a two-by-two. Um, but I would like, you know, a better understanding of the CARES Act funding, uh, the amount that, that is coming, comes directly to us as well as what goes through the city and um, where, where we currently are with, with that funding and expenditures uh, based on the funding. Um, so at some point, I would like, um, we may be receiving an update soon, uh, but I would like some better clarity around that.
Okay.
Sorry, I was just looking at future agenda items. Um, okay, thank you for that, Ms. Basine. Mr. Jenkins, does that conclude your report?
Uh, there was one last item, and that was uh, also included in this agenda item is the fiscal twenty twenty-two budget timeline. I can review that with you if you wish.
Yes, please.
Okay. Let's see, I believe Ms. Tanner is displaying that on the screen now. We're recommending uh, public hearings uh, for citizen input on December second, uh, so that would be at the next meeting and also on March third. Discussion and identification of school bu- uh, school board budget priorities would occur on December sixteenth under this proposal. Uh, the school board would have budget work sessions on January thirteenth, February seventeenth, and March third. Dr. Birdsong would release the proposed budget to you on February seventeenth, uh, with adoption by your, uh, by the board uh, on March seventeenth. The budget, of course, must be approved by city council, and this typically occurs in May. And it also may be followed by school board action if that is necessary. Uh, Dr. Martin, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins.
Thank you.
Dr. Martin?
Yes.
Um, I'd like to call for the orders of the day. Um, we neglected when we approved the consent.
Yeah, I know.
Well, just wanted to make sure. Do I move to um, approve Personnel A?
Second.
Okay. Ms. Tanner, go ahead. Go ahead and call the roll.
Basine?
Nay.
Camson?
Yes.
Clanton?
Hi.
Gabriel?
Hi.
Jordan?
Nay.
Smith?
No.
Martin?
Hi. I apologize that I'd moved on too quickly. So I tend to do that. But thank you, Mr. Clayton, for bringing that up. Um, so back to the budget timeline. Do we have any questions? Ms. Smith, go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Jenkins, on February seventeenth, are we looking at presenting both of these at the same time? Or is this supposed to be, uh, let me look at a calendar. Is this supposed to be the third and the seventeenth? Like one of these, the discussion is on February third and then the present, presentation to the, or present, yeah, presenting it to the board is on the seventeenth?
Right. Uh, Ms. Smith, the presentation to the board would be on the seventeenth of February.
Okay. And then the discussion is on the third?
Uh, there's certainly a work session. I, yes, we have a work session scheduled on the third. So uh, there would be, actually, there's discussion on the seventeenth and the third. So there would be discussion of the superintendent's proposal on the seventeenth. Uh, and there would, there could be additional discussion on March third.
So with this, I just want to make sure I'm understanding. The original plan is we will have the discussion and it, and the um, budget be presented to us on the same date?
Uh, that is correct. Uh, there would be discussion first and then a formal presentation at the board meeting, I believe.
Dr. Birdsong, just for some clarification, I do believe we'll be informed and this will be an ongoing conversation between now and then, correct? I mean, it's not that we'll just be hearing about the budget and then have a discussion in March.
This is the typical timeline that um, that the administration provides to, to the board around our budget process. And as you know, every month, um, our CFO provides, you know, you know, an update related to budgetary issues. But this, this timeline mirrors what we've done in the past.
Yeah. And so I'll, I'll be emailing um, everyone. We're gonna need to come together on what our budget priorities are and communicate those with Dr. Birdsong as well. Um, Ms. Smith, go ahead.
Dr. Birdsong is probably just the wording that's throwing me off.
I think so, Ms. Smith.
Yeah, I'm almost certain. And that, and that's where my question comes from. So really, I can look at this as just one, one thing occurring on this day. Basically, the discussion of the budget.
So on the seventeenth, Ms. Smith, um, like we did today, we had a workshop. Usually, we, we don't necessarily have a, a workshop before our business meeting, but we anticipated that we would need more time to discuss the budget with the board. So we're requesting a workshop on that date on, on the seventeenth. And then during the business meeting that evening would be more of a uh, formal presentation of my proposed budget to the community and to the board, of course.
So having the discussion and the presentation So having the discussion and the presentation on the same day, does that really allow for time to incorporate any of the the points that we agree upon? You know, that come from the board on that day?
Well, we we also, that's just based upon the priorities that you provide, Ms. Smith, because the board should be able to provide that to me. And I think we provided a a timeframe for that. Um school board, yes, on the sixteenth, school board provide administration to identify budget priorities. Then we take that information, Ms. Smith. We work with our team um and our departments, our leadership team to come up with a budget proposal, which we would be sharing with you first, the board during a workshop, and then with the general public. Certainly, we anticipate feedback from um the public hearing, also from the board members, and we will be tweaking the budget as we as we go along.
Okay, thank you.
The proposed budget is based on the priorities that, yes, that you, the board has provided to me in December, specifically on the sixteenth, as a reminder, if you agree to this timeline.
Any more comments or questions, Mr. Jordan?
Yeah, I I like for us to consider, uh I mentioned before about uh trying to convene a joint meeting with council. And um if that's possible to do, um perhaps prior to the February seventeenth uh meeting, but uh you know, we really have not had a chance uh as a board and as a governance team to sit down with the council, with the new city manager, with Dr. Birdsong, with all of us together. And I think it might be a good idea for us to see if we can uh incorporate a joint meeting uh in the in that uh in that process.
Absolutely. Ms. Bassin, go ahead.
I I agree with that, and I actually had that comment for for our future uh discussions um to do that as well as we even consider how we work together to help meet the needs of our students. Um so I I definitely agree with trying to get a joint joint meeting um on the calendar sooner than later.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um can I get a motion to adopt the monthly financial report?
I move that we adopt the monthly financial report as presented.
Second?
A second.
And Ms. Bassin seconded. Go ahead, Ms. Tanner. Please call the roll.
Bassin?
Aye.
Camson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye, and the ayes have it. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Um, okay, next on our our agenda, we need to um approve our legislative priorities. Uh with us today, we have Mr. Ron Jordan uh with Advanced Strategies. Hi, Mr. Jordan. You're on mute. Um so what I had done. Let me get my little thing up. There you go.
Okay, I was gonna say apologies from Jana. She's away and unable to join us tonight, so you you've got me.
Well, thank you for joining us. Um so just so you know, we haven't had, and this is our first time actually getting an opportunity to discuss this. I had sent um to each of you members of the board. Um I had asked at the last meeting to send any changes or, you know, any anything you had on a legis commentary on legislative priorities. I did get some from Ms. Bassin and some from Mr. Jordan. Um and so um I'm gonna start with Mr. Jordan. Can you uh propose your your suggestions for changes?
Give me a moment. I'm pulling up what I sent to you.
Clarify, Vice Chair Jordan.
It's it's fine.
Oh, yeah, I understand.
Rodney and Ron, I got it.
That's right. We got it. The two Rs.
Yeah, so uh so back on uh November sixth, what I what I sent back to dark Dr. Martin. Um so one was, I believe, we need to consider resources to enhance and sustain technology-driven learning as a result of the pandemic infusion. So I like to have something there that we may need to consider. Uh also, uh the portion dealing with, uh well, I'll just read what I wrote. I like the following, remove pending full board discussion update on educational planning, St. Paul's and safety and security task force updates. Uh the item that had um provide matching state funding to establish a regional workforce training center in innovative high school to prepare students and adults to immediate employment and to connect businesses to a highly skilled workforce. We haven't discussed that in quite a while, so I don't think it belongs in the priorities at this point. Um and then just the portion having a discussion around um as well as increasing funding for school security officers at elementary schools to keep students safe. I know prior to the pandemic, we were in the process of having the safety and security task force completed and coming forth with some recommendations. And I just think, based upon what I've heard thus far, some good work there. And it may be some other items that we may want to consider. I just think we should get the opportunity to receive that task force report and discuss the priorities before um including them at at this point.
Good.
That's just my thoughts to the board.
Any comments on Mr. Jordan's suggestions? Ms. Camson, go ahead and unmute yourself.
I was ahead of you. I was clicking it as you said unmute. Um it's a good point that Mr. Jordan uh brought up about the Safe and Secure Task Force. They were in the process, and as we both know, Dr. Martin, because we were on the committee, of putting together final reports that I think they were scheduled to present to the board in May. Um maybe it was even April, but it was somewhere in there. We're working on it. Uh we'd already moved it work moved into our work groups and we're coming up with uh at the actual presentation because the pretty much everyone on the team wanted to come in uh and be there when the presentation was made. Um and then, of course, the very people that that made up the task force were pulled out to work on the emergency when the pandemic hit. And so I'm I I think none of us have thought to push it yet because the pandemic is heating up once again. Uh but certainly, perhaps, um and I and I know that uh the member of the senior staff for the superintendent uh has moved on to something else, and she did such a good job of of putting it together. So that would be something that maybe we could pursue, then the superintendent could simply appoint a new liaison and we could and maybe you and I could update or some so that we could see if these people are becoming available again or if we need to wait a little bit longer. It's, you know, it's uh, that was my baby, that task force. And uh I'd like to see them get up together. They they shared so many great ideas. And we had, we had the FBI, we had the Sheriff's Department, the Police Department, um emergency services, all the the and the top people were coming in. It was uh, it was so interesting to hear them and to listen to their suggestions. Uh they were so knowledgeable. So anyway, I'd like to, and I see uh Dr. Birdsong can add to that, but uh I'm not sure if they're gonna be available to do anything yet. Dr. Birdsong?
Madam Chair, may I have the floor?
Yes, Dr. Birdsong, please go ahead. Yes.
Um so, um yes, Ms. Camson, as soon as uh Tim Mallory came on board, that was one of the first things that he asked about. So I know he's actively working to get this group back together again. And so um so we've already started moving the ball on that.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, literally at that last meeting, we were just talking about the pan
There we were. Everything was getting ready to get the uh reports out. Um and I'm so glad Mr. Jordan brought it up. Thank you so much, Mr. Jordan, for bringing that up.
Yeah, and I appreciate you, um Dr. Birdsong, keeping that going. And I just want to remark that we do have on our agenda for December second, a discussion about the school resource officers, and that will be put to vote um on our on our December sixteenth business meeting. So it's one of the other items as far as security. And Ms. Bassin, I saw you had your hand up.
Yes, um well, I was gonna share, I don't have, I share some of the same um feedback that Mr. Jordan provided, but if uh if no one else has any comments specifically to to his feedback, I can share mine.
Does anyone else have a comment on what um Vice Chair Jordan was saying, his comments? Dr. Gabriel, go ahead.
I would keep the CTE language in the legislative priorities for right now. I wouldn't, I don't mind having a further discussion about it, but I would keep the language in there at at this time.
Okay. Any other comments about the CTE language? Okay. Um, okay, uh, Mr. Jordan, how do you feel about that if we keep it in there and then just continue the discussion?
Well, so again, I what I in in following my assignment, what I what I thought we were gonna do was uh, you know, provide the feedback and then we would have sent all this out to the board and then had a chance to come together and discuss in it. Last year, when we dealt with the legislative priorities and the regional high schools, a lot of different moving parts going on, and I'm just not sure where we are. Like I said, we haven't had an update um on it. I still think there's a conflict between um, you know, North Public Schools is still recognized as the education partner with the uh St. Paul's Transformation Grant, the CNI grant. In that, in that proposal, what was submitted was the CTE school at one location. We have this priority around a regional school. I just think that um it'd just be a better process for us to get an update, have a discussion, and then determine where it is that that we're going. We've uh talked about putting on the agenda for a uh mid-year retreat, an opportunity to get some updates and get up to speed on where we are with our educational planning and our goals. So I'm not saying that I'm opposed to a regional school. I just think to keep it as a priority at this point, when we really have not had a discussion about it in a year or so, uh wouldn't wouldn't be appropriate at this time.
Madam Chair, I can add some information. Um for everyone's benefit, as you know, um the city's been really behind this, uh it's been the driver behind this. And they have um and there was a budget, a couple of budget amendments submitted during the session, during the regular session. And um in the end, there was essentially language that asked the community college to look at um how how a system would be, how a regional workforce training center would be structured in conjunction with the community college system. Now, and certainly you all's call, but we could modify this to um support that that looksy and report by the community college back to the 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 school board and and the uh and the city on that if that would be a an acceptable middle ground for you guys.
Any opposition to Ms. Mr. Jordan's proposal?
Ron Jordan or Rodney Jordan?
Mr. Jordan.
Vice, my Vice Chair, any objection to Mr. Jordan's by Vice Chairman Jordan?
So so Mr. Ron Jordan, what you what you brought up was is is part of my concern. So um you know, at one point, our focus was on uh trying to make sure that we had opportunities dedicated to to our students. Uh we did have, we've had conversations back and forth in terms of the role of the of the community college. Last year, when we had these amendments going through, we really never had a chance as a board, I felt, to really talk about what this meant in terms of the work we've been doing. I recall Senator Spruill calling me and sharing me about some of the changes, and I was asking him questions about it. And I'm not sure where the city is, which is another reason why I thought it was important for us to have a joint meeting and for the board to also make sure we're clear on where we are uh and being on the same page. So it doesn't mean that uh it can't be something that people want to advocate for. It doesn't mean, I don't know what the city is putting there, legislative priorities, but I want to make sure that we have a clear understanding of what's in the best interest of our students and making sure that our students get served uh to the max, as we've talked about over the years. The other concern I have uh with that, you know, throughout this uh conversation about the the school, uh I thought there were some comments made that may have suggested that um uh so you know, certain locations may be better than others, but we, to me, we just really haven't had an opportunity to discuss it as a board. I'm not saying that I don't think it's something we should do. I I think we need to have a CTE school, as we've talked about. And if it requires a regional component, then we need to talk about what that looks like and what that means for our children. I just don't think it is good for us at this point to list it as a priority in the absence of an updated understanding of where we are as a school division, where we're going as a board, and and where our city partners are. Madam Chair.
Um Ms. Bassin had her hand up, and then I'll go to you, Mr. Clinton.
Um yeah, I I was just, I I agree with uh what Mr. Jordan has uh has state, Mr. Rodney Jordan has stated um at this point, until we do receive that update and clarity on um all of the different facets of of this, you know. I too, you know, have the same concern. I would like for us to focus on the priorities that are relevant here and now, not that that's not relevant. And I'm and as I shared with you earlier, Dr. Martin, I'm certainly not opposed. I think it's an important venture, but I think we need to know exactly what it is. Um and so um that's that's just my my position on it.
Thank you, Ms. Bassin. Mr. Clanton, go ahead.
Um, Ms. Jordan may find this to be uh interesting, but I don't disagree. Um and yay, we can find agreement.
We have to celebrate all of our agreements.
Um I, because actually, I would like to see, this pandemic is opening up so many different things. Um and and he, I think, Mr. Jordan, you made mention about um identifying funding, um I guess for technology and so forth and learning um for the future. Um and I have consistently said and always left it as an option to look at the uh though we had any structure, but really looking at um what the Ford Foundation did with our sister school division over in Hampton and really propping up a strong, robust academy system. Um when we start looking at how much it costs just to build one of these schools today um and whether or not it would be better use for us to kind of really go back to the drawing board, because we've been talking about this thing since two thousand and five. Um and just to think about the number of students who've come out of North Public Schools who have received great CTE, but could have received so much more. Um so with that, I I would not be an objection um to kind of leaving this as a placeholder, but really for us to begin to expand upon and and really to put it as one of our priorities and discussion, what does the future of career in technology education look like um when it comes to high schools, looking at the academy structure? And are there other uh opportunities that are out there for us to take advantage of? Um and beginning to look at a blended overall utilizing virtual learning, in person, um that we can really make something a strong product that will be beneficial for students for the future. So um I'm adding, I would agree that kind of maybe couch this until we get another discussion and really work with our city partners um to help um come up with something uh, you know, just take another look at it.
Okay, so hearing three people who are who wanted to um take this off and really focus on it before we advocate, make it a priority, not that it's not important, but before we put it on our legislative priority list. Is there any opposition to that? Okay, all right. Mr. Jordan, we're gonna table that so we can kind of retool.
Okay, and and when you do discuss it, uh we can, I can provide you some background from being involved in the discussions over the last year. Um and we've, we've, on behalf of the school board, we've tried to emphasize very strongly in those meetings that the curriculum is, should be the first priority, not the building or the location.
And and CT, just for anyone who's listening, CT curriculum is um alive and well. It's going very strongly in our in our schools right now. It's not that it's not happening. We do have uh career technical education happening very well in our
So then let me ask a a question. With the draft priorities that we have right now, um if there are changes that are gonna be made, um are we then gonna come back and then adopt them after discussion or are we moving forward? Because I think time is of the essence for Mr. Jordan and his group to um have them presented to um number one, our representatives, and then number two, for our um Bring Your Legislator to School um event uh that's coming next week or the week after that.
You're exactly right. That's why we're discussing You're exactly right. That's why we're discussing it tonight is to take a vote on, on this. So we'll, we'll vote it, um, with these changes. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and I'll turn it, I'll turn it around tomorrow based on what you all decide tonight and send it back to you for what, for last loop.
We do have more. Um, Ms. Basine has some other items. Mr. Jordan, are you, are you good? I'm sorry, Vice, Vice Chair Jordan.
Yeah, you know, I mean, I'm fine. We're still in the discussion phase. I'm, I'm, I'm waiting for the, for the rest of it, but I, I appreciate the consideration.
Okay. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Basine. She has some comments as well.
Okay. Um, you know, and I, I'm happy to share, share these with you as well. Uh, Ron, um, after, you know, after this meeting, it might be easier. Um, but you know, first, you know, while I understand the language around, you know, maintaining the current funding, you know, as advocates with our legislators, we know that funding for our public education for our school system has been underwhelming. So, you know, anytime we can say increasing the funding, um, you know, that's, you know, where I feel we should say, you know, status quo, especially with everything that we've experienced. Um, and the inequities that have been exacerbated, I think, you know, we should be fighting hard for that. Um, the second piece, um, underschool funding, which applies to the section on correct sales tax, the technical, uh, technical amendment, I support that. Um, again, I just think stronger, stronger text. If we can add that why it's important, you know, I find that when talking to legislators, sometimes um, they want to know why is this important, uh, to your school system? And so I, I would just advocate for a stronger, stronger text.
On, on that one, um, and there are a couple of others. Remember that when we prepared this and sent it out to you, the General Assembly was still in special session and hadn't adopted the budget.
Well, that's true. Right.
And since then they've adopted the budget and they, they dealt with a couple of the, these issues that we can come, I can come back to. But sales tax was one of them. They addressed that in the special session for us.
Right. You're right. You're right. Um, um, I feel like, as I say every year, the increase for support position, uh, the support position funding. Um, I can't stress strongly enough, you know, again, stronger text to why these support positions are important. I know, and Dr. Martin, I think you were with me last year when we were meeting with legislators to say, you know, I would really, I really want to understand with all of the needs that Norfolk Public Schools has, you know, why is behavioral mental health support so important for your school division? And, you know, I think stronger, stronger text as often that we can share it, I think, um, I, I would like to, I would like to see that. Um, the, we talked about the CTE piece. Um, and Ron, you might remember this, we were asked often about our position on collective bargaining. So the position on labor relations. Um, and last year, we hadn't had an opportunity to have board discussion around that. And, um, so my comment was simply that, you know, the board needed to have some discussion um, to, to establish a position on that, um, same with, same with school safety, which, um, you know, Mr. Jordan alluded to earlier in his feedback. Um, my next co, my next comment was about the, our two pieces that are in the policy section of the legislative priorities that I really would like to see moved into our legislative priorities, um, which is around broadband and technology infrastructure and the socio-economically diverse school learning environments. And I, I can't stress enough that, um, you know, and I, I think that one comes up every year too, that I want it first, you know, at the top of the list. Um, so I'm going to keep advocating for that. Um, to, to move that to the top of the list. And I sent, um, you know, and there's a new report that came out from the Commonwealth Institute for Fiscal Analysis on modern day school segregation. I can send that report to you as, um.
I, I've got, VCU just completed one also.
Yes, right. And VCU did too. So, um, some supporting facts to go along with it.
Okay. Okay. I got those. And I, and what I will do, um, if it's amenable to everyone, I'll take the broadband and, and also, and build it up. But I'll emphasize affordability as well as accessibility and also build in the Mr. Jordan's item about increased funding for not just broadband, but also, um, technology and related instruction.
Right. Any opposition to those recommendations? Any comments? Mr. Clanton, go ahead.
No, I would just like to say that I, I, I agree with, um, Ms. Basine, um, on her last two recommendations there. And that, Madam Chair, when it's appropriate, I did have a couple items that I wanted to just highlight that came out of the VSBA legislative positions that I wanted to ensure that we included in ours.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, so on Monday, um, I had the opportunity of serving as delegate again, doing the VSBA, uh, Delegate Assembly, um, where we approved the legislative program for VSBA, uh, and position statements, some, some amendments as well as some bylaw amendments. Um, where, um, I know we'll talk about it later. Mr. Jordan, um, completed his tenure. Um, and presided over that meeting as state president for VSBA. But, um, in that, there were some things that I think really dovetail into what we've been talking about. One of them was 3.9 of the VSB legislative, which talked about access to electronic textbooks and adequate connectivity. Um, so I think that really dovetails into what Ms. Basine was talking about. Um, and in that one, it's, it's, um, it, it talks about it, uh, it should be the policy of the Commonwealth that all textbooks approved by the board to use grade six through 12 shall be equally accessible for, to all students at the school and in their, um, residence. And by July 2022, every household in the Commonwealth should have access to a fixed broadband or wireless broadband connection service uh, with unlimited data allowances and speeds of at least 10 MPS, uh, download and three MBBS, um, download. And the Commonwealth shall provide funding, um, on a per pupil basis to the local school boards for any school eligible, uh, for free and reduced meals, be provided with free reduced price data access accordingly. Um, so that along with what we've talked about, um, what we're going to do here at a board level to talk about some type of one-to-one. Um, I think this, uh, adding this into our language as a priority really helps us as we start talking about, um, equity and, uh, and what this pandemic has really been opening up to us. Um, the other item was, um, was about volunteers. Um, and I know that the district has, uh, has had a volunteer program. Um, I, I ran it for some time there. Um, but one of the things that really highlighted this year in the VSBA one was about, um, individuals, um, who had nonviolent felonies. Um, and we ran into this situation, um, even at MPS, where you may have a parent or someone who may have had a minor marijuana, um, possession at a, a younger age. Um, and they are now a parent and they want to be involved and engage in their child's life, uh, but they have a felony. Um, and so one of the things that they're working with on the state level is at a school board level, um, each school board to look at this, um, and to look at, um, how we might be able to increase our volunteer net. Um, and look at nonviolent individuals who have a certain period. I know that, um, MPS, we looked at it. Um, it's kind of been a, it was a superintendent letter some years back that, uh, 10 years, no, um, criminal record. We all do background checks and so forth. But I think that some type of language should really show and again, going back to, um, being accessible and equity um, and really looking at what the, the Commonwealth is doing right now in the General Assembly and re, um, assessing some of their criminal justice reform, um, that how we on the public school side can also dovetail to make it more welcoming and inviting and creating an environment for individuals who may have made a mistake, but who can definitely show life lessons, um, that are nonviolent against a child and be, and be able to be great mentors. Um, and the last item that I wanted to.
Hold on, can you?
What, Ron, I'm sorry.
Sorry. You were on a roll. I didn't want to stop you.
All right.
So, so what's, what's the ask for the General Assembly in the second one?
Um, the, the ask of the General Assembly is that in, in an increase, uh, in an attempt to increase the pool of volunteers who can apply as a volunteer, school divisions of Commonwealth Virginia should consider applicants on a case-by-case basis who have a felony conviction, um, but who have been, um, fulfill their legal, um, commitment to society and that application process will be considered, um, type of crime commitment.
Okay. It's, and that's in the VSBA package.
Yeah, it's four point, it's 4.19 volunteers and that's in there. Let's live over four.
Okay.
And I just want to make sure there was one last one. Um, oh, the last one here is what we're doing right now. Um, it's 5.3 and it's the 21st century communications for school boards. Um, and this is about virtual meetings. Um, this is about the ability to, which we're already doing here in, in Norfolk. Um, you know, we've always streamed our meetings, um, through China 47 and we've done it online. Um, but they've, uh, the School Board Association really talked about the, um, ability to be able to have more virtual meetings. Um, and many school divisions across the Commonwealth talked about how much more the community was paying attention and how much more the community was engaged in the virtual environment, particularly when you looked at, um, parents who, who didn't have to find a babysitter, um, to watch their kids, but they could watch the school board meeting and be involved directly from their living room. Um, and, and so, and, and how many more people were speaking. And so they, there's more. Um, so 5.3 Ron really talks about, um, changing, um, some of the, the rules around, uh, allowing more flexibility outside of an executive order for local school boards to really investigate and look at having more virtual, um, as a means and a tool, um, at certain times to be able to continue, uh, to engage the community and, and communicate with them. And so you'll see the full language in that.
All right. I'll get it.
Great. And so that's what I had, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Clanton. Um, any other comments? Good. Okay. Um, Mr. George, Ron Jordan, since we have you here, um, can you just take a, a minute and, and talk to us about what, um, how, what is advocating for these policies look like? You know, normally we don't have our, um, Legislative Lobbying Day on education. And, and, you know, just kind of run around and say hi to everyone and try to get, you know, pitch, you know, set, get our pitch out. Um, so what is that looking?
The big, I, I think one of the ways is we're going to do it is just like we're doing now. Um, we, we'll have an opportunity, a little, a little bit of take your, bring your legislator's school day. Uh, and then we'll be following up these, the, the items that we have in our package, um, are not unique to us and they're on a lot of people's radar screens. And, and we will communicate this, the, the package, um, to every member of the delegation. And then we'll be, and, and I would suggest that we, um, take the temperature of, of the delegation when we have the, um, school day, the let's invite your legislator's school day and, and ask them, um, tell them you would like to have a, a couple of hours of their, an, an hour of their time or an hour and a half of their time in a virtual setting to talk a little bit in depth about some of these issues and, and why they're important. And I think you'll find that, uh, the, the virtual format lends itself that, to that really well. Um, and people are engaged and, you know, you can essentially, you don't have to get up and get dressed and go somewhere. Uh, and, and most of the delegation will engage on that and it'll be very productive. And I would suggest that, um, that we, and we try to do that right after Thanksgiving.
We have ours scheduled for Monday. Is that correct?
That, that's the back to, that's the invite your legislator's school day. But I'm saying as a follow-up to that, um, uh, we would have something that's focused just on the legislative package for a little more conversation than we would, might be able to have during the back to school thing.
Yeah, I realize we would have done that by now, but, um, for obvious reasons. We're just, um, but it's not that it's not important. So I appreciate the work that you're doing and helping us to advocate and put our best foot forward with our legislature. Um, so, uh, I would like to know, um, on that note, um, Mr. Clanton, Mr. Jordan, can you speak, um, Vice Chair Jordan, which, can you speak to, uh, anything we need to know about Monday and our Bring Our Legislator to School Day?
Uh, so Madam Chair, uh, go ahead and speak to it. Uh, so work invitations have gone out. We think, um, Ms. Karen Tanner and Dr. Paul, um, invitations have gone out to the, um, both our local, state and federal legislators. Um, and the program will be broken into three parts. Um, there'll be a welcome in the morning. Um, and then we will break out into smaller groups where we will, um, have, uh, kind of like a civics, uh, where students will be able to have an opportunity to speak to the legislators. Um, so we'll have two board members assigned to each one of those. Um, and then we will come back and then that's when we will present the, um, which really will be at that time, the draft of our legislative, um, uh, policy, uh, position statements here, um, and begin to have the first initial conversation. Um, part A and part C of that will be, um, streamed live. Uh, so individuals of the public will be able to watch that. Um, and part B of that, when we go into the individual classrooms, um, unfortunately won't be streamed live on that one because of, um, uh, privacy for the students and so forth there. But that's pretty much a, uh, in a nutshell, I know that you had a vision. So, uh, for that day, and so we hope that we, uh, will execute on that for that day.
I appreciate it. So I'm really looking forward to seeing it. Yeah. Um, Mr. Jordan, did you have anything, Vice Chair Jordan, do you have anything to add?
No, uh, Mr. Clanton has been, uh, pulling the weight on that and appreciate that. And he's given a good update and look forward to, uh, whatever we end up, uh, doing together.
Wonderful. Wonderful. Thank you.
You know, you had, Mr. Jordan had a whole state to worry about.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I knew. Um, so, uh, with that, I'd like to go ahead and, um, ask for a motion to adopt the legislative agenda as, um, as revised.
Uh, Madam Chair, um, I'd like to move that we adopt the legislative, that we adopt the, and I'm going to say draft legislative, um, position statement here, um, pending any additional revisions that we may have. And I think that.
Second.
And this, and I'll turn this around and send it back to you guys tomorrow by close of business.
Thanks.
Thank you. Um, Ms., uh, any discussion? Ms. Tanner, please call the question.
Basine?
Aye.
Hamson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye. The eyes have it. Wonderful. Thank you again, Mr. Jordan, for, um, joining us this evening and, um, and helping us through the conversation. Um, I appreciate all the work that, uh, you and John are doing for our district.
Well, we, we enjoy working with you all a lot. We really do. Uh, and so, uh, it's, it's a work of love.
Oh, good. Good. Thank you. All right. Have a great evening.
You too. Bye-bye.
Okay, wonderful. Okay, so, um, next on, I always get ahead of myself, so let's see. Okay. So, um, uh, next on our agenda is in-person transition revision discussion. And, um, just want to start by, by reminding, you know, everyone that as we go through, uh, managing our schools and, um, the business of the board and, um, and operations, we during a pandemic, um, and this is obviously something that we're all going through and, um, there are lots of unknowns, but, um, we're uncovering those every day, so us and all the experts in the world. So, um, so I've said many times that we are, um, we're going to const, as we learn more and more about this pandemic and, and, and how it's impacting our, um, our community and, um, and as we're learning more and more about, uh, from the virologists and, um, and the CDC guidelines and our governor's, um, restrictions and so forth. So as all of this is evolving, um, it's, you know, bringing light to different areas. And so I think, again, um, this is a conversation that is constantly, uh, developing. And so that's why we keep reapproaching the topic. And also, we're all going through this. So, um, I just want to, um, be clear that, um, when we talk about in-person, uh, transit, transition, that, you know, that it's not something we're talking about, making changes right, you know, tomorrow. We're, we're trying to really get, I say, we're trying to get ahead of the curve on this, think long-term and plan well. I like our incremental approach that we've been taking to be steadfast and, you know, we've been conservative and, and only moving forward when we know the data and we feel comfortable with the data. But of course, that, that continues to evolve. Um, I, I like this incremental approach because, you know, we've been moving forward. We have not had to backtrack and change course and, and we're really conscious about, um, you know, our, our families and the planning and, and every, and if obviously, um, with our administration and our, in our, our district and all of, all of the moving parts that, um, that make this, uh, that will make this a successful implementation as we, you know, as it, as it rolls out. Um, and of course, right now, we're seeing heightened, um, we're, we're seeing the mountain. We've been in, we've been in the foothills and now we're in the mountain. And, um, things in the, uh, COVID rates are peaking all around us. I have to say, I think that, um, we have been very consistent with what our city council's been doing. They've been very conservative, moving ahead in their decision-making, as have we. And I think that that is, um, that is, uh, is seen in how, if you look at us versus. if you look at us versus surrounding areas, that the COVID outbreaks positivity rates in Norfolk have been a lot, have been lower in comparison. And so I think that, you know, I, I'm really happy, you know, proud of our leadership in the city and really proud of my colleagues and our, our governance team and, and all of the head administrators on, on the staff. They're helping to, to got, you know, direct us and give us the information that we need to make the decisions for this, this district. So with that said, there was some discussion about, I want to open it up, open up the discussion because in our last vote, we had talked about, we, we had voted to wait until to adopt the, sorry, in line with the Virginia Department of Health, school reopening matrix. We had agreed to wait until we were in the lowest and lower levels of the pandemic, which is the light green and the dark green is indicated on the, the matrix for fourteen days before reopening. And, and so one of the things that, that first came to mind, you know, as scrutinizing the matrix, I think we're all, we've all been learning more and more as we watch these trends go up and down. That I, I just wanted to open up the possibility of, of looking at changing the light to dark green into an orange or the yellow, which would be the moderate to initiate opening. And, and we had some discussion about, not as, not as a complete word, that's what, I'm just kind of introducing some points about, about making some changes to that motion. So with that, I'd like to, I'd like to turn it over to, not for a motion, but for discussion. Ms. Basine?
Madam Chair, I'd like to remind you that this is a formal meeting and I will call upon order. We need to have a motion. There will be no discussion unless it is around a motion of action. It will be out of order. This is a formal meeting and I just don't want a discussion going on and on and on. Discussion needs to be pointed around a motion of action on either one of these two proposals that's in here or, or something. But just to go out and blanket to have another free for all discussion, I, I can't support that.
I'm, I'm a little confused by that. We just talked about our legislative priorities and then adopted them. So I'm not sure why this is any different.
Because we've already had the discussion and taken action on it. We haven't had a discussion and taken action on the legislative priorities. We had a full meeting and took it, and there's an action. So whatever motion there is, the motion of reconsideration, which is a different type of motion. So we have to have a motion of reconsideration to take action on something that we've already done before just having a blanket discussion. That's the difference.
Okay. So Ms. Basine, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm you.
Sorry. Thank you. I, I respect that. However, you know, we have, we also talked about the legislative priorities previously. And we did have discussion on that. And I would like to have not lengthy discussions, but brief discussion before I present the motion so that the, so that the motion is understood.
Is this regarding your motion that you submitted to us last night?
This is, yes.
Okay, so Madam Chair, I like to call her motion out of order because reviewing your motion before we even get down that road is out of order for motion of reconsideration, though you did vote in the affirmative with the majority. Your motion is a brand new motion, is in conflict with the motion that's currently, with the motion that was approved by the body, which is currently in state. Your motion essentially takes three motions and places them together, which creates a new motion. So it's out of order. So before we even get down that road.
I guess.
I agree.
It's not a reconsideration. It's a brand new thing.
Dr. Martin?
You know, here's the thing. I, and I'll, I'll just be frank with everyone. I see this item on the agenda as six point oh three. I did my homework in preparation for this meeting tonight. I reviewed the personnel docket. I reviewed the legislative priorities. I even reviewed emails up to about nine thirty last night. And to get information this morning after working overnight that there is a proposal out there for a new resolution for changing at our business meeting, I was quite surprised. I don't find it collegial at all. Ms. Camson was very respectful in bringing up the issue at the last board meeting. She was very patient. She said this was something that she was considering and that she was going to bring up a motion regarding bringing special education, self-contained students back and ELL students back. So I, I was prepared to have that discussion. But with all due respect, I'm not prepared to discuss a motion from Ms. Basine at this moment in time with regards to CDC metrics. It is eight thirty. We've started our meeting at four o'clock. And if the objective of the meeting today was to come in and have discussion about approving or not approving someone's proposed motion, I, I don't think that it is in the best interest of the spirit of discussion and the gravity of the discussion that we will, will be embarking upon moving forward. So I support Mr. Clanton's proposal that it is, it is, it is out of order. I frankly believe it's disrespectful. And Dr. Berthong, I don't even know if you've had the opportunity to weigh in on this. But I'm not, I am not ready to have a discussion on this without fully reviewing what the proposal is.
I was under the, I was under the impression that you had actually seen this proposal even before I did. So, okay.
But I do have that question, Madam Chair. Dr. Berthong, have you been, has this been shared with you?
Yes.
I, I can't speak for Ms. Basine. I think you need to ask her about that, but I did receive her email, I think it was maybe nine or ten last night. I know it was sometime last night, but that was the first time I had seen what was sent to me. I don't know if that's what you're referring to or not.
No, honey, have you had a conversation about this at all?
With the board chair?
Board chair, Ms.
I've not had a conversation with anyone around, if you're talking about the email that I received. No.
Yeah. So the reason I put this on the agenda was because Ms. Camson said that she was going to make a motion during matters of the board, which is not something that, that we normally do. And so I put it on the agenda.
So Madam Chair, then why aren't we speaking to Ms. Camson's motion? If she?
By the way, I asked to have it done at the beginning of the meeting and Dr. Barton suggested, and I, and that matters of board might be a better place for it is my thing, because I wanted to do it at the very beginning. And then I understood that. And then when she called me back and she said Ms. Basine was putting one on after mine, I thought. And that it would be more appropriate in this place, which I agree with. I thought this was a more appropriate place to, to make my motion. Well, not me. It's not a new motion. It was the one I made two meetings ago and withdrew because we were hour seven. And then I wanted to, and so I would plan to make it at the last meeting, but then realized that I would, that I needed to have as a courtesy to all of the other board members and everyone. I, instead of making the motion last week as I had planned, not last, two weeks ago during the work session, I simply let everyone know I would be making it this time and that it would be the same motion that had been tabled at the request of other members and then that I withdrew when we were at seven hours in the meeting. And so that's what I thought that I was going to be doing. And, and I was, you know, and then I don't know why I didn't get called on.
And so I can explain that. It is because I, I wasn't calling on Ms. Basine to make a motion. Mr. Clanton, you're the one that put that in, that framework in place with your point of order. But I wanted to have a discussion around some possible revisions, which might be a new motion before addressing the motions. So if we're not ready to do this this evening, I'm more than happy to adjourn the meeting.
So my, mine that was given plenty of notice, proposed, tabled by, at the request members of the board, then withdrawn by me because of the hour. And then that I let everyone know I would be repeating the same one and proposing again two weeks ago. And I still don't get to do it after a month. Is, is that where we are with it? I'm, I'm disappointed, you know, but you know, you're the chair.
I, I really don't want to discuss these motions. Go ahead, Ms. Basine.
Yeah, I, I just wanna, I just wanna clarify. I, I did have concerns about having a lengthy discussion about the phases and my objective was not to be disrespectful to you, Dr. Berthong, or to any member of the board at all. I had originally, as, as you all know, had provided a draft for consideration on October twentieth a month ago. And so some, and then I thought, well, let me try to streamline my thinking around it. And so that is what you, what you have before. Of course, before I didn't have a motion attached to it, but giving some consideration and some deep thought around the, the motion that was taken on October twenty first. You know, I have and, and studying the research and the literature since that time as well. You know, I had some thoughts and considerations that I wanted the board to, to think about and consider. And that's simply what I brought forward here tonight because for me, you know, time is of the essence. And yes, this is a business meeting, but the time, time is ticking and our students are, you know, I, I have, I'm, I, I know we're all concerned about not only the academic supports our students are getting, but I'm deeply concerned about the, what the social isolation is doing to our students. I'm deeply concerned about the behavioral and mental health impact of not being in school on our students. And so I'm simply trying to find a way based on the research and on the science of how we can get our students back to school. And that is simply my objective. It was not to be disrespectful to any of you. And I apologize if it comes out that way. And if you feel, Dr. Martin, that a lengthier, you know, dedicated time period is needed, you, you know, to have a, a full discussion, I'm certainly open to it. You know, I, I'm, I'm not one to turn away, especially during this pandemic from whether, if we need to have additional meetings to talk about things because this is too important to me. And it should be that important to all of us. And I know that it is. So, you know, if it's a special meeting, I would like for us to consider it. But, you know, I understand the concern about having that discussion right now. But, you know, I'll just leave it there. My intent was not to be disrespectful. But I do feel that we need to have a, a conversation around getting our students back to school and revisiting the decision that was made on October twenty first.
Totally. And unfortunately, this has taken, eaten into the time that I was hoping to be able to have this discussion with both of the motions because I think that both of them are very important motions. And I was hoping to act today, but it's a quarter till nine at this point. We still have matters of the board.
So Madam Chair, I'd like to table both of these items to the, I think our next meeting is December second. I think we also have a public hearing at that one, right?
It's a big meeting. It's a long meeting.
But what do we have for the regular work session?
It's not gotten very.
Dr. Berthong, our next board meeting in December would be what?
So December? Our next board meeting is December the sixteenth would be the business meeting. The second is the work session.
In public hearing, right?
Yes. And the public hearing.
Yeah. Following Wednesday after that, I'm sorry, Dr. Martin, I'm, I'm just trying to formulate my motion to find a way forward. So, Dr. Berthong, I saw your ping go. What was that?
Yeah, yeah. And, and I just wanted to say, when, whenever there was discussion around adding this to the agenda and the reason I, I need to, to speak to this is because time is of the essence. There's been a rumor within our community that the school board and the administration will not allow our children to participate in winter athletics. And I wanted to publicly say that that is not true. And it's very concerning that someone would put that rumor out there. It, it's very concerning to me. And it, it may be, you know, it may have started internally. I, I don't know. But I do know when the, the administration presented our plan to you a couple of months ago about our return to in-person instruction, we were also thinking about our athletic programs. We were thinking about the social emotional needs of our children and isolation and all of the things that we have been talking about. I do know that our children have been conditioning and our, you know, we had a, a discussion about our coaches and their role with working with our children. And, and so, you know, around this discussion about, you know, bringing our kids back, when we presented our timeline, we, we believed that we would have gone forward with that and with our athletes in mind. And I, I just don't want there to be confusion about, you know, what it is that our athletes can do at this time. You know, the board was permitted us to move forward with the conditioning, winter sports are coming up. And, you know, there's just lots of concerns around, of, of course, we want the children back in school for in-person instruction. I said that and I continue to say that. But at, at some point, we've got to meet the needs of our, our kids. And I, I just think it would perhaps be a disservice, especially with some things that have gone on recently, not to allow our children to participate. And I'm just gonna leave it at that.
Thank you, Dr. Berthong. Ms. Basine, go ahead.
Yeah. And along those same lines is, is where I'm pushing for us to have this, this discussion. And if, if it's appropriate, I'd like to ask if we can possibly have a special meeting to have this discussion because I think we're gonna start getting into, you know, winter break. And then comes January and then I know we're going to be, I'm, I'm putting out requests for who would like to participate in VSA for the second semester. And I think we need to kind of know what we're, what we're doing and align ourselves with that. So, you know, I'm open to that if we can't have that discussion tonight.
Thank you.
And so Madam Chair, the only thing I'm saying is that I would love to have a conversation with Ms. Basine and hear her thoughts. And, and to, to share with that. I really feel that this is one of those moments that we as board members have to, we can't have three of us on a call. But this is where we need to have some one-on-one discussion to, to work out, you know, what we stand. So that when we come to a meeting, we have a general sense and it's not the first time hitting us like a, a brick. And we have a long drawn out discussion. So Ms. Basine, normally, you know, I don't like a whole lot of extra meetings, but I will do that because I believe that this is important and I will be in support of that. And the next possible opportunity for that outside of the hearing would be December ninth. I don't know what everybody else's work schedule looks like for that. But if we could have some one-on-one discussions with both Ms. Camson and you about what you all have here. Let's pick up the phone. Let's talk about it. Let's walk through it. And then if we can come back on December ninth to, to be able to come in and have a special session where we've already had some conversation around it, and it might speed up the process some.
I will say that I have talked to everyone except for you and Ms. Smith about it.
So.
Times. So. Ms. Camson, go ahead.
You know, we're in the middle of a pandemic and sometimes I think that we put a lot of focus and time into meetings that are not recognizing the emergency that we're in now. And so when we come to discussions that Ms. Basine, I looked at her and I was very interested in seeing what the discussion would be there. And mine, of course, a little mine, a little tiny one, but it was something that I really believed in strongly. And it just seems like that we're not as focused. And this is just my point of view, is that we're not as focused on the fact that we're in the middle of a pandemic and that that should take a lot of time. We shouldn't even have to call more meetings because it should be what we block out the time for. And I agree, the business meeting was not the best time to bring forth a proposal. And, and, and I regret, well, I don't regret that I gave. And, uh, and, and I regret, well, I don't regret that I gave everyone a heads up last meeting, because I didn't want to surprise them as a courtesy. But here we go again, and, 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 and I'm already a month into trying to get this proposal, this motion through. And, um, and, and so it's just disappointing, because it's, it's, it, it, I just don't feel the focus all the time is, it seems like this should be the most thing that we talk about. And we're doing a lot of other things and the time goes by. And, um, and I think that had we been able to move right into our motions, then the time would have been devoted there. And, and because we are supposed to have a motion to start this discussion. And so I, I'm disappointed. Now another two weeks, maybe I'll get something done with it, but the clock is tick, tick, ticking on the lives of our children. And we're perhaps not focusing as sharply on the fact that this is an emergency. And it's, and it's emergency that we haven't dealt with before. And we have all these different opinions and, and different needs of everyone. And we're getting, you know, constant letters and I'm reading, reading, reading email all the time. And, um, and the truth is, everyone's right, because there is no good choice and there is no right decision in something like this. And I, and I've said that so many times. And, and so we change, we, we, we think we're, we're on track. And two weeks later, everything changes and, and it gets hot again with, with the rising numbers. And then we back down and then we do this and that. And anyway, I'm just going to, I'm just trying to say, maybe we need to build in more time and, and a sharper focus on this emergency that we're in right now and that we're learning from scratch what to do about it.
Yeah. And again, I wanted, I wanted to have this discussion. I wanted to honor your, um, request to have time and make a motion. And I just, you know, of course, matters of the board is not a good place either. And so that's why we put it on the, um, discussion and decision agenda.
Maybe we should have gone right into that, though.
Would have, it really, um, should be the discussion for the evening. Um, Dr. Gabriel?
Okay, so I have a suggestion, and I don't disagree that this is, this is an item of such grave importance that it requires our undevoted and focused attention. It shouldn't come at the end of a meeting, which I understand now, hearing the discussion, you know, why it was placed there, but I still was in the fog about what exactly our ask was at this time. So my suggestion is gonna be, why don't we just flip what we, um, were going to be discussing as far as the work session on December the 2nd? We move this discussion for December the 2nd. And then we take the items that were, um, originally scheduled to be discussed on December 2nd, excluding the public hearing, and then just move those to December the 9th. That way we catch it, um, as, as soon as we possibly can when we're meeting again. And we start with this topic fresh, ready to go to have that discussion.
Um, Vice Chair Jordan and Dr. Birdsong and I will meet to talk about the agenda planning for the second and we will revise it and see what, what we can do to possibly fit it in. Otherwise, we'll be calling a special meeting, possibly. Okay. Thank you for your suggestion. Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So I do, it, it sounds like I do have the board's support in, in moving, um, our athletes along.
Is there any opposition to Dr. Birdsong's position?
No. Full support.
Thank you. Thank you.
Vice Chair Jordan?
Can, can you just clarify? I, I, um, so we, we, um, so last Thursday, I think it was, Dr. Martin, Dr. Birdsong and I spoke following, um, having a conversation with the Council of Great City Schools around some efforts. And coming out of that meeting and coming from what we had discussed before, my expectation was that, uh, as Ms. Campson mentioned, that for this meeting, we were going to have an item added to the discussion agenda, decision agenda, to deal with the return to school proposal that we discussed previously. My expectation at that point was that on Friday, when the agenda was made live, we would have had any motions, any supporting documentation, all of that. My understanding was that there have been one-on-one discussions and that the goal here was to do just what I think people were talking about, trying to come back and be on one accord so we could take some action in order to begin to bring some children back through whatever means that, that we thought was, uh, appropriate. So not only did we get, um, Ms. Bassin's item posted today, we also got Ms. Campson's items posted today. And I think that might be some of the confusion concern that's, that's going around now. Also at Inquirer, because we were getting these, um, emails coming in about schools, about sports, you know, what exactly we were gonna be doing and whether or not we would have a recommendation. And even up to, uh, earlier today was my understanding that we weren't dealing with that. Now, so I just want to be clear, is the question, what we're approving is for Norfolk Public Schools to participate in winter sports? Is that what we're saying now?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, so I'm, I'm supportive of that. But I just want to say, as I've said before, from, from day one, just as I'm supportive of our students having the opportunity to, um, participate in sports in person, also think our students need to have an opportunity to receive instruction in person. And I thought the administration brought a recommendation to us at the previous meeting. And then we adopted measures that made it almost impossible for students, any students to come for in-person and also may have caused some confusion around the sports piece. So if there's some additional clarity, because now we're talking about, if I understand now, December 2nd or December 9th, you know, I agree with all of you. I think each day that goes by that we push things off limits an opportunity for children to receive some in-person instruction to the extent the health conditions, uh, allow it. And, um, so I'm, uh, I think if it's that important, I know people are tired. I've been going all day today. But if we need to have a discussion now, that's going to allow for some students, under whatever the circumstances are, under whatever the timetable is, to receive some in-person instruction, as we talked about before, it's gonna take time for the administration to implement that against the calendar that we have. And so, you know, I'm in favor of us, um, doing it now if we can. You know, I'm not, I'm not sure what it all involves, but to, to jump from, uh, trying to make sure that some students have an opportunity for instruction, now we're, uh, on, on the sports thing, which is, which is fine. But if we have concerns about, uh, safety and welfare and all those things, I just want us to be consistent and expedient. And frankly, I'm just a bit confused, because I thought that some of these discussions had occurred, so we could come here today and be in consensus in terms of trying to move things forward, uh, in alignment with the recommendations that we had previously received. So I'll just leave it there and whatever we do next is, is fine, but. So, Madam Chair, I have to raise an objection then. And, uh, because I heard Mr. Jordan just say, there's been discussions had with everybody about the proposal that Ms. Bassin's had. And I am a board member who has a vote, who has a say, who represents constituents, and I have not received the same courtesy that others have received on this board regarding this proposal. I received this last, no, I've received this the same time everybody else got down here. And if we're saying that we had personal phone conversations to go over those, I was not given and afforded the same opportunity, not to mention the technical piece, that it's not a motion to reconsider. I'm not gonna sit here and I'm not going to sit here, I let you speak, Mr. Jordan, I didn't interrupt you. I'm not gonna sit here and allow us to go on a fiasco circle, go around here and not be in order. It is not in order. Ms. Bassin's proposal tonight is not in order. I'm willing to have a conversation so that it can be in order, so that we can take it up on maybe December 2nd and have a conversation about it. But I'm not gonna sit around here, guys, and just sit here on my own professional piece and be like, look, it's not in order. Now, Ms. Campson did tell us at our work session that she was gonna come with something. She did. She gave that to us and, and, and we have that here tonight. I, I might be willing to go and, and talk about that one, but I don't want to feel like we're in the Twilight Zone and we don't see what's going on around us. We are in the middle of a pandemic, numbers are rising. And yes, the reason why Norfolk's sitting in the way that it is right now is because we have been adhering to certain protocols of safety. So let's not ignore that and act like that those are the reasons why we're not seeing what we're seeing right now. Our own senator came out here today, said we cannot let our guard down. So, yeah, I want to have a conversation about it, but let's not act like that there's not a pandemic going on and that student safety and teacher safety shouldn't be at the foremost front of everything. If we don't have healthy people, alive people in our classroom, there's no education. So there's gotta be some hierarchy here. But I'm going back to my, my objection. I haven't had the opportunity to really digest this, to have a conversation, and I'm willing to have that at the appropriate time. And I'd like to be able to postpone this, maybe to December 2nd, so that we can do that and come in and we've all had that opportunity. But to sit here and drag through and take everybody through this whole sausage making, because we haven't had the, a one-on-one conversation, isn't fair to us and it isn't fair to constituents watching this.
Dr. Martin, just, just to clarify, I didn't say anything about Ms. Bassin's proposal. I mentioned all of the discussion. I was not singling out Ms. Bassin. I mentioned Ms. Bassin's proposal and Ms. Campson. I sat here quietly. One minute we said we weren't gonna have a discussion, we're out of order. I just offered my thoughts based upon a discussion that we had. So I don't, I don't, not sure where the other piece is coming from. All I simply said was, if we're gonna have the discussion, as Mr. Clinton just said, then let's put it on the table and have the discussion. If we aren't gonna have the discussion, let's end this and move forward. But then the other piece came up around the athletics piece, and I just wanted to have some clarity around the two, because they were getting mixed up in my mind. That's, that's all. So thank you.
So do I have a motion to postpone table this discussion until further need?
Move to table.
Thank you, Mr. Clinton.
Hold, hold up, point of order, move to postpone.
Yes. Another, okay, anyways, I had a date in mind. Okay, um, motion to postpone. So, um, any discussion? Okay, Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Bassin?
Aye.
Campson?
Stein.
Set up state. Okay. Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Just asked for clarity, the motion is to...
Is to postpone to.
Any discussion? Any further discussion?
Correct. Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye. Okay. Um, moving on to the next item, we have, uh, matters of the board. Anyone want to bring any matters forward? Ms. Smith, go ahead.
I would just like to ask if we can get a list of, uh, matters that have already been provided by the board members.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Campson?
I'd like to request, and this actually was from an earlier conversation I was having with Ms. Bassin. And we were talking about having quick updates, um, on the coronavirus, one of our, during one of our discussions, uh, which seemed like a good idea. And, and quick means not all the members of the senior staff each presenting to us, just to have the superintendent give us a little quick update on, on, on things like, when are we bringing the teachers back, for example? Or, um, are all the schools now ready with the, with the markings on the, on the hallways, the pacing on the hallways? Those types of things, not every one each, each time, but maybe different ones, or what's the trend now with the metrics, which we know is up. But something like that, i- if, if that would be something that we could start doing. Because I know I kind of had a question about when were the teachers going to be coming back? And, uh, and that would be the kind of thing that would be, uh, that we could get a quick answer from, a quick update from the superintendent at each meeting, maybe at the beginning, that would devote some time to focusing on, uh, the coronavirus. And I would put that to Dr. Birdsong. I'm not thinking about taking a lot of everyone's time and her staff is so busy. But if we could get like a five-minute quick update that might focus on different things. And right now, I would think, when are the schools gonna be? I mean, I know, she probably already has them ready. But there are certain things that I don't know about, like when the teachers come back or are all the buildings set? How, how many cameras are in now? Do we have enough cameras for every classroom? Or at least enough for the elementary schools, which are phased in first, those types of things.
Dr. Birdsong?
Madam Chair, if you will recall, we had this, we had this, we had this conversation at our last agenda planning session, you, me and Mr. Jordan, and we decided that, um, and, and that we would move forward with an update, um, around a, a variety of things, but it would be a brief update. And I have to hand that back to my chiefs. And, um, during our next agenda planning session, I'm ready to report out to you.
Thank you. I also want to say, you know, I think that, um, I appreciate, like I said earlier, you incorporating the work that you're doing, like at Lake Taylor High School in your report today in the video, and to actually see it was, I think, was really good to, you know, we don't always get to, especially the public, if anyone's watching, always get to see what's going on in our schools and, um, and, you know. So it was really wonderful and I appreciate that. Anyone else? There, Clanton, and then Dr. Gabriel.
Yeah, just quickly, I just want to remind everyone again about bringing Legislative School Day, which will be taking place on this Monday. You can find out information about that from the, um, uh, sk12.com site. Um, and I would be remiss, um, I think I mentioned it earlier, um, but as a board, um, Mr. Jordan did represent us. He had served as president this year, the Virginia School Board Association, and I know that he will be concluding his tenure. Um, and, um, I guess this week, or is it done yet? Is it Friday?
Friday.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, got, got two more days. And then he'll serve the, uh, the immediate past president. But, um, I wanted the community to know that he, um, has represented us, um, uh, on that level and represented, so congratulations to you.
Thank you for your service, Vice Chair Jordan. And we'll all be in, in attendance the next two days, right? The V S B A convention? Okay, great. Dr. Gabriel, go ahead.
Um, this is our last meeting before we go into the, uh, Thanksgiving holiday. And, um, I just want to reiterate, and I know that everyone is very appreciative and grateful for our staff members, um, and our families that have been doing work above and beyond the call of duty for, um, making sure that our students are, uh, getting the best possible education, uh, they can. I'd just like to remind everyone to be safe over the holiday break, enjoy your time with family and friends, cherish it. We are very lucky that Norfolk has actually done very well as far as mitigating, um, the pandemic. We certainly are not, um, like our, um, sister cities in the West. But I am very, um, appreciative, um, for everyone's services, especially our teachers. I'm thankful to them. And I would like to just wish everyone a very, um, safe, um, Thanksgiving weekend. And please remember to, um, follow the CDC guidelines so that we can have that discussion about coming back to school, um, soon.
Thank you for that. And, um, and again, when we're talking, you know, when we get to this discussion, again, we're trying to plan ahead. So, um, this discussion isn't, you know, something that we're gonna put in place the next day. I, I really don't see that happening. It's, it's just to give a heads up, to keep planning so that when, um, as we do phase back into in-person schooling, that, um, that we, you know, we've really given the time to prep and do the best, you know, obviously put our best foot forward with that. So, um, okay, if there's nothing else, Mr., uh, Vice Chair Jordan?
So I've, I've mentioned. So I mentioned that there was, well, in the VSA convention, I mentioned that there was a student representative workshop yesterday, I believe it was yesterday. And Georgia and Amelia were both able to participate in that workshop, and they were outstanding. And I just think that we should always remember, as I think we should do now, to give them an opportunity to have voice in these conversations. That's ironically, the conversation in the meeting yesterday was about civility in the boardroom. And it also touched on student voice, and they did a great job. And before we leave, I just would like to acknowledge that and give them any opportunity for anything they would like to share with us. Just as I felt they shared yesterday about what they're facing, what their peers are facing, or anything that they would like to talk about. So I want to put that on the spot.
Yeah, so yesterday in the workshop, I got to attend a breakout session just regarding these virtual meetings and how great it was that there's an increased participation in virtual meetings with students and teachers, especially because everything is directly impacting us. And I kind of talked a little bit about, you know, before this year, I had never heard of my peers wanting to listen or tune in to a school board meeting. And that this increased participation and interest in these meetings is a really good thing, and it shouldn't stop anytime soon. Also, if I can ease any concerns for parents or even board members about athletics. I am a student athlete and I've been, you know, attending conditioning at Powhatan Field. And just to walk you through a little bit of what that looks like. I get to the field with my mask on and I wait in a line that's socially distanced to have my temperature checked. Prior to that, in the morning, I have completed a health screening that's checked once again when I get there. And once I've been screened at the field and my temperature's been taken, I go out on the field and I'm given a mask that's washed by our coach after every practice. And everything is completely distanced. And I understand the concern for consistency in wanting to ensure health and safety for students. But being able to participate in athletics right now is really important for students because it gives us community that we're lacking without school. And it provides a way to, you know, reach that community in ways that going to school, you know, in a physical building can't provide us right now. We can't meet those same, you know, guidelines and regulations inside the school building. But where we can meet them outside on the field, it's important to take advantage of that. And, you know, I do feel heard by the board regarding mental health concerns. And I think that's relevant in a lot of my peers' lives right now. But athletics really does provide me and I know a lot of my student peers with the community that we're longing for, especially these days when we can't be inside the classroom. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Simpson. Ms. Burz, would you like to speak?
I thought it was really great to be able to interact with other school board representatives from all around the state. That was really great to get to talk to them. And in one of my breakout rooms that I attended, we discussed ways to engage like more target groups of students in ways that they don't get to be engaged in class as there's less one-on-one. And I thought that brought to the table a lot of really cool and interesting ways and platforms to do that through.
Wonderful. Well, you're going to have to give us some tips, maybe. We'd like to hear about, more about that. Thank you so much. And thank you for participating in that yesterday. I know you had to, yesterday was Tuesday, so you had to get some excuse absence from school. So I really appreciate you doing that for us. All right.
And Madam Chair, I did not pay them for those comments.
What's that?
I did not pay them for those.
Yeah.
We're from the heart.
Oh, absolutely. You could tell. So thank you. I'm glad you both had that experience. And, you know, someday you might be in Vice Chair Jordan's position, so we're going to keep an eye out on both of you. Okay, without any other comments, I call this meeting adjourned. Have a great night. Stay safe.